Uh huh. Okay. Good morning, this is June the seventeenth, twenty twenty. Hearing for the Executive Appointments Committee. I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chairman of the Committee. One of the committee members is the Vice Chair, Councilman Burnett from the Eighth District. Also on this committee from the Fifth District is Councilman Schleifer. From the Mayor's Office, I believe Nina Thimless. Am I correct, Nina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, also, the committee staff person is Marguerite Kern. Is there anybody else here from Council President Scott's office? Because I don't see it. Also, committee member Mary Pat Clark from the Fourteenth District. Okay. After, also joining us today are several nominees who are nominated to serve as members of the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities. There is follows, David Greenberg, Third District, Michael King from the Second District, Yohinde Paxton from the Great Twelve District. Before we, before we hear from nominees, I'm asking all panelists to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Speak slowly, clearly. And if you're connecting online, please use your right. Raise your hand, raise the hand function to indicate you wish to speak. Is President Scott? Is he on? Is President Scott?
No, Mr. Chair. No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Before we hear Mr. Greenberg, is anyone in attendance that wish to testify on behalf of the nominee?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Rebecca Simmons, General Counsel. I just wanted to mention, I am in the meeting and I'm with the President's office.
Oh, okay.
He is.
Sorry, thank you.
Currently chairing the Board of Estimates meeting. So, that's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we also have Ms. Rebecca Simmons from Council President's Office, City Council Attorney. We're starting in order, I call your name. The committee would like, the first one would be Mr. Greenberg. David Greenberg?
I'm right here.
The committee would like for you. Thank you. The committee would like for each of you to state your name. Tell us about your background, interest in the position, and share your vision for the commission. After you have finished your presentation, committee, committee members have, may have a few questions for you. So, Mr. Greenberg, you can start off, thank you.
Very good. Hello, everybody. My name is David Greenberg. I'm the President and CEO of the League for People with Disabilities. We're in northeast Baltimore, eleven eleven East Cold Spring Lane. I've been CEO for the last thirteen years. I live in the Roland Park area. So, I'm a city resident as well as a, running the organization. I've been on this Mayor's Commission on Disabilities for the past twelve years. Seeing lots of changes and seeing lots of impact that the commission has in providing feedback to the, to the city, really. So, it, it just, as far as my background, running a disability agency is, in the city, gives me an opportunity to better understand what all of the city issues are that impact people with a variety, variety of disabilities, whether they be developmental and from, from birth or from childhood or acquired. We have numerous people who have multiple sclerosis or spinal cord injuries that occur in adulthood. I have a particular interest and passion about transportation because it impacts people with disabilities. I think the city has a, and the state has a wonderful service. It gets a bad rap sometimes because at least there's a service. There's people in other parts of the, the state who, who don't have an opportunity to have a accessible transportation service in the more rural, rural parts. So, that, that's my, my interest and I, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Before we start the questions, I'd like to recognize Councilman Cohen, who is a member of this committee from the First District. So, what I wanted to do before we start the questions, I'm going to go in order since my Vice Chair is Councilman Burnett. Next will be Councilwoman Clark, next will be Councilman Cohen, and next will be Councilman Schleifer. So, Vice Chair Burnett, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, just thankful for willingness to step up and serve. I just want to say that to all of you. But, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Clark, do you have any questions? I can't hear, did you say no?
Sorry.
Hello?
I just, excuse me, I'll, I'll be with you. I'm sorry, that was my husband. Poor man. Thank you very much, Mr. Greenberg, for your service for so many years and being willing to go forward with it. My special interest has always been transportation and we were very involved in North Baltimore in creating Action and Maturity, which still is existing as a nonprofit. And I was wondering whether in your, in your work at your work, any services that are provided by that organization for your members?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we partnered with AIM about, it's probably been more than five years now, as a, as a, as a stopgap because we were, we were not able to get the children from the, from the city schools to the league for our after-school programs. And so, they, they provided a service and we compensated them for that. And then, things changed and we didn't need that service anymore. But it's a wonderful organization. But we're not, we're not engaging in anything formal right now, but it, it, it's a different, they're a transportation company mostly. I think they have a senior center too.
They do, but basically they are the only citywide nonprofit that provides transportation for the elderly. And they do it at many of the high-rises.
Yes.
City, shopping and the like. And then, in the afternoon, they have personal trips where they can take people to their doctor appointment or whatever.
Yeah.
In smaller vehicles.
And I'm, I'm sure that they, they likely do bring people to the league for, because we have the community center with the therapeutic pool, obviously not open right now, but our therapeutic pool and our gym. Perhaps they bring them for voting, we're a voting site.
We all come there for voting, yes.
Number one voting site in the city usually.
Amen, amen. Finally, I, I just wanted to say that I want to thank you that today, my four adult children have all learned how to swim at your pool. It was, and I loved it because it was warm.
Yes.
I could stand there with them without freezing to death and they ended up being life. And all that kind of good stuff, all again where you are, thank you.
Thank you, good luck in retirement.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize Cedric McCray from the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, also in attendance. And next questions for Councilman Cohen, if you have any?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Greenberg, for your willingness to serve in this capacity. I think that as a city, we're having some difficult and important conversations about rethinking racism and how we, you know, sort of deal with a very difficult history. The Chairperson of this committee did a resolution on recognizing racism as a public health issue. Obviously, we're seeing demonstrations across Baltimore, across the country. I'm curious how you think about and how we should be thinking about folks with disabilities as another category of people who are often left out of the conversation, who don't always, you know, have the support from city government, from state government, and who can pretty easily be marginalized within our city, within our country, within our society. So, I'm curious what you think the role of the commission is in creating a more equitable, supportive environment for our neighbors with disabilities?
Well, I think it's an important question, just to, before I get to the commission, the league, interestingly, in its history, it started in nineteen twenty-seven at a further downtown on Franklin Street, moved up to where we are in the, in, ironically, in sixty-four Civil Rights Act. And it has always, going back to the twenties, been about inclusiveness. It was started by some Jewish women, so all kinds of, no barriers based on, on somebody's background or skin color or religion. But regarding people with disabilities, we do very much advocate with employers, because we help people get jobs, about when you have a diversity and inclusion task force or diversity inclusion initiative in a business, part of diversity is disabilities and that people with disabilities should be treated like everyone else. So, I think it's part of the conversation, but I think right now, it's much more about Black Lives Matter and just the, just the yeah, disability is, is a, is a minority, if you will, but it's, it's not suffering to the degree historically that we've seen with people whose skin color is different. There seems to be a little bit of empathy for people with disabilities that's there. There's a lot more empathy that's needed for people who, you know, are, are not as privileged as I am to have white skin. So, I think it's important, I love the fact that the commission, what, a year, two years ago, moved up under the Office of Civil Rights because it is a civil rights issue. So, and I think that the, the office has done a wonderful job trying to educate us more about civil rights and liberties through, through the commission, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, Mr. Greenberg, I, I just was listening to some of the comments you made and I think we need to talk about economic opportunities because we can protest all we want, we can talk about Black Lives Matter all we want, but if black people and people of color don't get no economic opportunities in this city, we're going to be still having the same conversation. We're going to have to change policies, we're going to have to change laws. So, we can march, which is great and I'm great, glad to see young people involved. Now, we got to go back and look at the policies and the programs and making sure people of color and black people and brown people get economic opportunities. Also, I would like for you to work closely with Mr. Cedric McCray, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, because that's the key to actually making sure that the Disability Commission actually have a good relationship with Mr. McCray. So, I just wanted to share that with you also.
Totally agree and, and, and have been working with Cedric since he's been involved with the, the commission and the Office of Civil Rights.
Thank you. The next question is would come from Councilman Schleifer from the Fifth District.
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Do any other council members have, any other council members present have any additional questions or remarks? Okay, thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Our next nominee is Michael King from the Second District. Mr. King, I need you to state your name, tell us about your background and interest in the position, and share your vision for the commission. After you have finished, the committee members may have a few questions for you.
Yes, sir, thank you, good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to, to speak with you all. My name is Michael King, I am a proud resident of the Second District. My background, I, I work as the manager of People with Culture for Family League of Baltimore, as the local management board for Baltimore City. The, the work and the support that we provide to social programs within the city brings to light a lot of the challenges that we are seeing from, from those with disabilities within the city. And, you know, my, my goal with being on this commission is to, you know, further, further improve the challenges that, or further improve the, the abilities that they can, we can, as a city, meet these challenges for people with disabilities. And one of my goals, I'm, I'm really, I'm happy to hear like the conversation and the questions regarding like race equity because that, that's another focus that I, I hope that I can help lead on the commission is looking at how we are, how we are managing the people with disabilities within the city using a race equity lens. The, the challenges that are inherent for those with disabilities. It's only, you know, further increased by, you know, looking at the, the challenges they may have because of the race that they are. So, in looking at the work on the commission and, and moving, moving forward with the work, you know, hoping to, to maintain that race equity lens and understanding the differences that even individuals with disabilities may encounter because of, simply because of their race.
Okay, thank you. Before we go any further, our last first nominee, Mr. Greenberg, I wanted to find out whether any public testimony for him, I'm sorry. Is there any public testimony for Mr. Greenberg?
No, Mr. Chair, not at this time.
Okay. Vice Chair Burnett, do you have any questions or remarks?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
You said you do or you don't, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm having some connection issues, so, no, I did not.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark, do you have any questions or remarks?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sounds like a good, I just, one question, is this your first term or are you a veteran?
No, no, this would be my first term, ma'am.
Okay, it's always good to get some new blood in there.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm done.
You're on mute, Mr. Chair, you're on mute.
You're absolutely right. Councilman Cohen, do you have questions or remarks? Thank you.
I'm all set, but thank you for your willingness to serve, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer, do you have any questions or remarks?
Yes, Mr. King, how did, how did you hear about this position? You said it was your first term, correct?
It, it is. So, actually, you know, just looking at, you know, some of the commissions that the city has and then I saw just, this one being posted, however long ago that was now, I think like eight months or so, online. And then, just doing some research around, you know, the work of the commission, the changes that have occurred within the commission. And then, you know, I, I felt that especially with my, my role with Family League, that this would be a, you know, a suitable place that I could maybe make an impact with.
Gotcha, so you applied eight months ago and you just heard back recently, or?
Oh, no, we've been, you know, yeah, the process has been, the process has been like ongoing. Of course, you know, with, you know, with teams and everything else that has occurred. You know, there's been, there's been feedback and we've been brought in through meetings and things as that just to better understanding of the commission through the process. So, now it's, now it's just, I guess, a culmination of that.
Gotcha. And so, is this term, is it, maybe the Chair knows the answer to this. Do these terms end when, when this term ends? Or is this a four-year from the starting point?
Well, you asked me that?
Anybody who's got the answer, I mean, maybe our Ms. Thimless has the answer.
Yes, Councilman, so these terms are concurrent with the terms of the Mayor and City Council, so there would be, it wouldn't count as their first full term, so they would still be eligible for two full terms if a future mayor would want to reappoint.
Uh huh, so all of these people have to be reappointed again in December?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Learn something new every day.
Thank you, I just have a question for Mr. King. Can you give example how you would address applying a race equity lens to disabilities?
So, in terms of, you know, transportation, transportation is one of the, the larger components to this. So, ensuring that the access to transportation is not specific to certain areas where maybe regarding race, let's say that access is, is being focused more or resources for access being focused more in an area that has a higher population of white individuals rather than, you know, an area that has a larger proportion of black or people of color area. And then, ensuring that those resources are being equitably shared across, you know, the, the demographics for the, for the needs of those with disabilities.
Thank you. Do any other committee members have any questions or remarks? Okay, thank you, Mr. King, appreciate it. Our next nominee is, I'm sorry, somebody, okay. Anybody else have a question? All right. Our next nominee is Yohinde Paxton from the Great Twelve District. Mr. Paxton, could you give the committee members, tell us, state your name, tell us about your background, interest in the position, and share your vision for this commission? After you have finished your presentation, committee members may have a few questions for you. So, you may start.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. My name is Yoshinda Paxton and I am currently a educational specialist with Baltimore City Public Schools and I work in the parent response unit. So, that consists of me working with parents to ensure compliance for their special education students. So, I help them navigate the special ed process and also conduct investigations and ensure compliance within city schools.
Okay. Our first question, will we, if we have any from Vice Chair, this committee, Councilman Burnett, do you have any questions or remarks?
Again, I'm, I'm barely, you're kind of fuzzy even on my screen. Thank you for stepping up, but I don't have any questions, I don't want to end up getting knocked off here.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Clark, do you have any questions or remarks?
I do, I do have a question. I mean, do you work with a number of schools or are you in one particular school, Ms. Paxton?
Sure, to answer your question, Ms. Clark, I, I actually work with all schools. So, I assure compliance investigations for all schools, even the non-public schools as well.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am.
So, but you work for the Baltimore City Public Schools?
Yes, ma'am, apparently I do. Yeah.
So.
The Office of Legal Counsel.
I see. Wow, you have a tough job.
Yes, ma'am.
If I hear from anybody, I hear from mothers of children.
We get those calls and those emails.
All the time.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. And you handle those ladies, it's, it's always ladies too.
It is always a mother.
Thank, it's always a mother, yeah, or sometimes a grandmother, but yeah. Well, let me say that, thank you for doing that job. I know just not from doing it, but from being on the receiving end of questions and concerns from people, how crucial it is to the children in our public, well, I guess in all of our schools. And thank you for doing the job. And what are you thinking of bringing to this commission, maybe information and things you know that no one, that we don't, that need to be looked at and helped with by this commission? Do you have any ideas of?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, what are they?
So, I've been in education for sixteen years. So, as a former teacher, I also bring the background knowledge of knowing how to verbally de-escalate some of our special needs students versus actually physical restraint and or, you know, them going through the arrest process or just, you know, versus them not being able to have a chance in articulating themselves because it's, it's kind of difficult sometimes for students that are caught up in a, you know, in a conflict cycle. So, just to kind of.
Right.
Step in and assist as necessary. And I know that there's been a recent push for.
Drama.
On non-life-threatening situations, to have a team of individuals to work with that, you know, maybe even this population. Because so often they end up getting incarcerated when things could have been, um, curtailed.
So, what you know how to do is what the whole nation is trying now to, how to do.
Correct.
I, I think you just got there on time for this commission. You're in the right place to make a difference here and help us all.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you. How would you bring your experience working in the school system to benefit this commission, especially as it relates to working with children?
So, I would bring the attention more to the population that I'm used to working with, the youth and young adults. So, ensuring that their voice is heard and ensuring that they also have a say-so in the services or the assistance that they receive. So, so often you had the adults that are making the decisions for the youth and young adults and they don't have too much input. So, actually making sure that their voices are heard and, you know, they're able to articulate what their needs and wants are.
Question, since the school system couldn't, couldn't teach at home and they had home, the kids and the parents working. I had a lot of parents call me because some of their kids had some disabilities and they called to get a computer for their kid. They went red tape, if I couldn't call Ms. Alice Cohen from the CEO's office. Then parent, a couple of parents were frustrated because they were told that they could get a laptop. So, are you be, have you gotten calls or you be looking at, looking at that because it's been happening? And if the school system don't, schools don't open back up, that's going to be an issue in terms of the IUP with young people with disabilities, so.
Right, so, I got those calls as well. So, we pulled those calls during the virtual time or during this distance learning time. So, we had a lot of parents calling, like you said, Mr. Stokes, as far as not receiving a laptop, unable for the child to access on how to use the laptop, because we also had students that were visually impaired, visually hearing impaired. So, that was a barrier as well because the laptop wasn't necessarily the, something that they needed or could utilize appropriately. So, yeah, we actually taken some data about that as well as I've, myself had, my team had to reach out to the schools personally and the principals to ensure that the students received the laptops or whatever services they needed. Some of them needed extra help also with completing their assignments. So, we had to reach out to the teachers and, you know, to the special education individuals to help them with accessing their work. So, those calls were received, we did get an influx of those calls, probably upwards of maybe a hundred calls, honestly.
Okay, great, I would love to see you work with communities also to bring awareness to residents and families that may not be affected directly, may be affected directly. Our next question is, Councilman Cohen, do you have any questions or remarks?
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you, Ms. Paxton, for your willingness to serve. When I concur with both the Chairman as well as Councilwoman Clark, just about both the need for students with IUPs or to, to get not only the laptop, but also the support to be able to use it effectively. Because it's, you know, we, we know that too often in our city's history, children with IUPs. children with IUPs have not always received the services that they've been entitled to. Thus, we were in a lawsuit and a court-settled case for a long time as a school system. Also want to concur with Murray Pat Clark in talking about the need for de-escalation and, you know, support that does not end with police or incarceration. We need to, as much as we can, disentangle police from our school system and help our young people be able to resolve conflicts in ways that are, that just don't escalate. My question for you, we, the council, Mayor Young passed the bill, the Elijah Cummings Healing City Act, last year. We're working on an MOU with the school system. We can't legislate our school system. They're a separate entity. But my hope was that you and certainly the commission could sort of be a bridge and could support that work. Because to Murray Pat Clark's point, a lot of this is about how do we work with young people who've experienced high degrees of trauma? And how do we create a supportive environment for them? How do we really empower them to be leaders, not just see them as victims of trauma, but really put them in a position to not just survive, but thrive? So I was hoping that you could help us to kind of bridge that work between city government and city schools.
Got it. So to your point, Mr. Cohen, I know my office actually was created because of the consent decree. So Von G was why my office was created. So that's why we ensure the compliance piece and ensure that students receive equitable services. So that's first and foremost. And to your other point, definitely the bridge as far as, you know, Baltimore City Council and government versus the school district, because it is a gap and/or a disconnect. Because, you know, we as, of course, Baltimore City school entity, it feels a little better than potentially city. So, you know, as far as affording those students that opportunity, that's why a lot of trauma-informed care is provided. I know that there's several city grants or grants that were given to Baltimore City Schools because of, for trauma-informed care in certain council districts. So that is, that was, that work has been done the last couple of years. So, but moving forward in the future, definitely being able to bridge that gap is a need, a huge need.
Yeah, and essentially what our law does is make it so that all of our city agencies need to be trained, right? Like Red and Park Housing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There, there needs to be a shared culture of understanding the impact of trauma and knowing what effective responses look like, right? Like, don't ever put your hands on a child. Don't kick a child out of the rec center just because they're having a rough day. And so my hope for you is that we can sort of bridge the work that's been happening at city schools with the work that is now starting to happen across city government and really have just sort of a shared culture of healing across our city.
Right. And I also, I also do training and consulting myself with nonprofit organizations around the city, too. So I work with them and working with this population.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cohen. Councilman Schleifer, do you have any questions or remarks?
No questions. Just hi, Ms. Paxton. Good seeing you again.
Likewise. How's it going?
Good. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
We take testimony from the attendees who called in. Ms. Kern, do we have any public testimony?
No, Mr. Chair. Chair, there is no public testimony.
Ms. Paxton, I want to thank you for your time and efforts also to commit to this commission. So will we, we will be, we will, the committee will vote. And is there a motion to recommend David Greenberg?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chair.
A motion made by Councilwoman Schleifer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Stokes is a yes. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Is there a motion to recommend Michael King?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Motion made by Councilwoman Schleifer, second by Councilwoman Clark. Stokes is a yes. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
There's a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Can you tell me? No, can you tell me who motioned and who's second on that vote? Thank you.
That motion was made by Councilwoman Schleifer, second by Councilwoman Clark.
No, it wasn't, but that's okay.
It's all right. It was
Who was it?
It was Councilwoman Clark and Councilman Burnett on the past two, but it's all good.
We're all for it.
Okay.
But now that I know it's already, I'm gonna start calling agencies as if I'm him.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I have the motion by Clark and the second by Burnett. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to? Is there a motion to recommend?
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Schleifer, second by Councilwoman Clark.
What's in that?
Councilwoman Schleifer made.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And the second by Councilwoman, thank you.
We're just jumping on each other to have a chance to say thank you to the three wonderful people.
Councilman Stokes is a yes. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer? Yes. The, the committee will recommend favor for all nominees. The nomination will be placed on second reading on Monday, June 22, 2020. For the, while on the second read, the full council review and take a vote at the time. On behalf of the mayor and the city council of Baltimore, I'd like to thank all of you for your willingness to give your time and efforts to the citizens of Baltimore. There's no other business. The committee is now adjourned and currently, congratulations to all three of the nominees. Thank you.